Then now I'm going to open the the regular board, the special board meeting of the Eugene 4J District School Board. And it is 7:05 and we have all board members present on Zoom. We have Mary, Laurel, Gordon, Maya, Alicia, Martina, and Judy, and we have Joseline. Hi, one of our student reps here as well. So tonight, we have a special board meeting. We had public comment on the schedule, but we didn't have any, any of the public to sign up to testify and or give public comment. And we had time on the agenda for our employee groups, but none of the three employee groups are going to be giving their, their public comments either. So their comments to the board. So we just left a work session and now our board needs to go into an executive session. So we're going to recess this regular board meeting to go into executive session and we will be back. How long do you think we need in the executive session so we can give the public some kind of idea, 45 minutes? Okay.
Forty-five minutes is too short for what we have to do. So I don't know how long we can go this evening. But we were planning for an hour and a half for this part. So what time is it? Seven o'clock? So if we can return at 8:30?
Is that okay with everyone on the board? We can just let the public know that that would be great. Okay, well, we will go into executive session until 8:30 and return to this meeting. And I have to apologize to Joseline. I'm so sorry this, yeah, you, you're making an appearance. You can come back and join us for this conversation at 8:30. So.
Have a nice evening.
I just told her that if she needed to not come back, that that is totally okay, Joseline. It's.
It is because next week you'll be able to make comments. None of the board members are making comments tonight. So, but you are always welcome. So thank you.
Bye.
So we're closing this meeting and the board will.
We have something on the screen for people to see.
Yes. Yes, we will. And if the board would leave this webinar login to the executive session, this meeting will stay open for the community to see the sign and then we'll reconvene to this link.
Okay, it's, it's 7:08 board. So let's take, um, let's see, how about 10, 7:15? Okay. All right. See you at 7:15. All right. Well, welcome back, everyone. We are resuming our board meeting, our, our public board meeting. And we have one item on our agenda, which is the, to approve the job profile. And the, the edited version was emailed to the board. I want to be sure everyone has that. I also emailed it just now to Carrie, Delph, and Lisa Jorbeck, just so we have that. So did every, did anyone have a problem receiving it? No, okay. So then I believe that our first, I'm going to ask Martina to make a motion and we'll.
Okay, so I think I'm saying this.
Anybody else read it?
No. Shall we take a few minutes and just all read it? Would you like to take 10 minutes and read through it? Okay, great. We were going to take 10 minutes and, or five to 10 minutes, just look up when you're ready and read it, have read it.
Judy, is there a way to make it available to people who, to the public while we, that they could read while we read?
We could probably if, I don't know how long it takes. I did email it to, as I said, Lisa and Carrie, they could upload it on Board Book if that's easy to do.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you. Thank you, Laurel, for having us slow down, have time to read it and Carrie for sharing it. That really helped. Okay, I think we should have a motion.
Okay, so I think, I think that this is the way that it should be worded. I move that the board approve the job profile for the superintendent as presented.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Martina's moved and Alicia's seconded. So is there any discussion? We have Mary, Laurel, their hands are up and then Gordon, I think. Okay, good. Mary?
This, this is minor, but on page four, under skills, there's a reference to DEI. And I had to stop and think of what that meant. So I think writing out that means diversity, equity, and inclusion, I believe, would be helpful. It's just a minor point, but I would suggest we be as clear as we can in this. Thank you.
I don't know if we need to vote on that. Is there any, so?
I would call it more like a Scrivener's error if we can just agree that if there's a Scrivener's error that we can have the, the authors fix it for us.
I like that. Thank you. Does anyone have a problem with that? Okay. Laurel and then Gordon.
Okay, I only have one screen, so bear with me while I go find my highlights. Okay, so I have under innovative. And so I move to amend the motion to, to make some changes. I have a few here and I would like to have discussion on it. One is under innovative, inspiring, and demonstrative educational leadership, which is all under skills. You'll need to be successful, the how. Says demonstrate belief and hold self and others accountable for reaching high academic. Okay, now it's not showing the whole thing. Okay, achievement of all students. That focus right there is, I think, where some of the, the. I would just like that worded, not just to say, demonstrate belief and hold self and others accountable for reaching high academic achievement in all students. It's not realistic. But it can be said to have the belief that, you know, and to work towards that. But just to say, we're going to be doing that and everybody has the ability to get there and we're going to keep driving in that ways where we get a lot of the mental illness and the problems that arise from just that drive that we're all going to go here. We're all heading for the same direction and, and you have to get there. And the reality is not everybody can get there and it's, it's really damaging. So I would like that to be written in another way.
Do you have a, let's say, come maybe one at a time because that's great. That's, so do you have a suggested wording or does anyone have suggested wording that reflects? You have some suggested wording?
Yes, and I'm, Laurel, correct me if I'm misunderstanding you. To me, the, the key point that we would want to get here is about all students as opposed to about high academic achievement, which I think is probably, which I see the same problem you said, Laurel, as well as it, it's kind of slants things towards the importance of people going to college. But if we could say, hold self accountable for providing a high quality education to all students or something like that, that if the emphasis is on, you know, not leaving anybody behind as opposed to whether it's specifically high academic. Laurel, I don't know if that fits with what you intended.
Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you.
So the wording is demonstrate belief and hold self and others accountable to providing high quality education for all students.
Yeah. Yeah, I like that.
So that's, that's a motion to amend.
That's, okay, we'll just do one at a time like that. Is that what you, okay, yeah.
Do we have a second? Alicia's second. So Laurel's moved and Alicia's seconded. Do what, do you want me to read that again or do, shall we vote on it? Is there any discussion on that amendment? No discussion, so let's vote on it. All those okay with the amending that bullet to redemonstrate belief and hold self and others accountable for a high quality education, to provide a high quality education for all students? All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. I mean, okay, looks like we have seven yeses. So that amendment passes unanimously. Okay. Laurel, did you want to finish?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, the facilitate and secure buy-in for a clear and compelling vision of innovation and organizational excellence. I'm not sure what that says. I mean, I kind of can guess, but I think when I look at that, it's, it's. I think it could. I, my, I, it's open to interpretation, I believe. And.
So would you like to, to change it or clarify, clarify what that means?
I, I guess I would, I'd like it to be simplified and if, and, and if it is, if it's saying what I think it is, then, then it, I'm sorry, I'm really tired. Does anybody else have questions about this one as well?
I'm also not sure exactly what it says, but it doesn't seem dangerous to me. I don't, I don't feel the need to amend it unless I'm missing something.
Judy, am I allowed to?
Yes, please. Thank you. If you have some clarification, really be helpful.
I, I think with all of the additions that we had around honoring people's voices and collaborating, I think you're okay with just deleting this bullet. I think the spirit of it, which was really about working with others and rallying people behind a compelling vision, feels like it's covered in other places now.
Okay. Do we, so I guess that's, so I, I vote to strike that. Okay, is that what I do now?
Laurel has made a motion to amend, to strike that bullet from the position description. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, do we have a second? Great, so Laurel's moved and Maya's second. Do we have any discussion about that? Okay, then all in favor of striking that, the bullet that says facilitate and secure buy-in for a clear and compelling vision of innovation and organization excellence, raise your hand. Looks like a seven, seven people voting yes, so your amendment passes unanimously.
I just have one more and it's under authentic relationship builder and courageous communicator. Does serve as an ambassador for the students, building effective relationships with city and community leaders, helping to tell the story of the district's successes and successfully advocating when needed. I'm not sure if I can see the whole thing. Oh, yeah, to ensure that the district is able to meet students' needs. I think, first of all, I'd like to add, definitely the county should be added to this considering that they are, they run, link that. So sorry, the youth, what is it called? The.
Suicide prevention?
No, please help me, Alicia.
Youth service, youth services.
Thank you. So, um, so definitely it's, it's. City is important, but also it is the county government, is the other government that is quite involved and having that connection in here, I think, is helpful. Thank you.
So you'd like to amend that by adding county, correct?
Yes, and, and, and I was hoping for discussion to add, but maybe somewhere else, community mem, community organizations specifically, like. So. If it's somewhere else, then I don't need that, but I didn't, I didn't see it somewhere else. So I would like to add county and community organizations instead of just community.
Laurel, would that, would organizations replace the term leaders there?
Um, let me, I've got to get back to it.
I think it would work.
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to read it, Laurel? I know you're working. Do you want me to?
Go, go ahead.
Okay, so the amendment would read, serve as an ambassador for the students, building effective relationships with city, county, and community organizations, tell, helping to tell the story of the district's successes and successfully advocating when needed to ensure that the district is able to meet student needs. Do we have a second? Alicia, okay, so Laurel's moved and Alicia's seconded. Any discussion on that? Then all those in favor, raise your hand. We have seven voting yes, so that amendment passes unanimously. Three for three, Laurel. Great.
I'm out.
Okay, I think Gordon, you have your hand up. You're next.
Thank you. I also have three things. We'll see if they're also all unanimous. One is, I would like to put on the, under what you'll bring, a track record of working to reduce time spent on standardized tests. And originally I was going to say tracker grid of reducing time, but I think that that has, has been a hard, like, I don't, I think that would just narrow our pool incredibly if we'd only seen people who'd succeeded in doing that. We found it hard to do ourselves, but at least the tracker could have worked on it. And my, my hope that we could agree on this is that this has been one of our, one of the main goals that we've selected as a board goal. I think each of the last, certainly this year and last year, maybe each of the last three years. So I, that's why I'd hope this could be a, a consensus thing, but that would be my proposal. You're muted, Judy.
Can you just read the amendment that you want to put in there?
Sure. So this would be under the, under the what you'll bring, a clear track record of working to reduce time spent on standardized tests.
Do we have a second? Laurel, okay, so Gordon's moved and Laurel's seconded. Any discussion on this?
Judy, you know, I, I agree, you know, I'm excited about what's happening at the state, reducing standardized tests. I'm having a hard time remembering what and how we said that. It may just be the lateness of the hour. I'm, I'm nervous that we don't put anything in here that we as a board haven't had a good, clear conversations about just because, you know, for transparency. So when you say we've said it the last two times, I apologize, I don't remember if it was, it wasn't in our goals for this year. Was it in our, was it? And I apologize, I mean, I know that there were some parking lot goals, but we actually never voted on those and, and, um, so if other, if, if that's the case, then that's fine, but I, I don't.
I know last year it was and I.
But it's a new board and this board hasn't talked about it. That's all I'm saying. And so that's why, I, I agree that we should be doing it. I just, like I said, I don't want to do work on this that should really be done in open session and with the full board's agreement.
Okay, I mean, we can, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it. I, it looks like the two new board members supported and I tried to word this in the most, least restrictive way, like reducing time, it could be reducing number of tests, could be reducing prep time, like to not, because I, and I think that that is what, that's what I remember us talking about as a goal, like a very broad thing so that, you know, it could be a lot of. So that, you know, it could be a lot of different things. But I'll just say.
So, yikes, my video's up. So if the other board members are fine with it, I'm not going to stop it. I just, I just couldn't remember.
Um, Maya?
As one of the two new board members, I can only speak for myself, but I, I do support this. And, and I, I think the only reason it didn't make its way onto the goals again is because we had like seven million goals we really wanted to do. And in narrowing down, it made it into the parking lot. But, um, but I, I, I fully support seeking a leader who, who is aligned with this, with this intention.
Great. So I think I'm next in line to speak on it. So, um, I agree that this board has agreed to this as a goal. I think my worry is putting it in as what you'll bring. I think we haven't had, you know, I think that's a really difficult thing for an individual in a district to do because it's usually the state that is doing this. So I wonder if there's a different way to word it than having a clear track record. Uh, you know, what we're trying to get at is would they be aligned with us to work towards that? Because I think with standardized tests, that's usually a state level decision and not a district level decision. So would we, would we even find anyone that has some kind of track record? They might, it might be something we want to find out what they believe in. So that's my only problem with putting it there.
Is, I don't know if there's a way to mush it around and say like, I've shown leadership in working towards, right? So it could be advocating in the state legislature as one of the possibilities.
I could go for showing lead or taking leadership or, yeah. Mary?
Well, just to, to give you a little bit of history, history again. Um, we did have as a board goal two years ago, then the pandemic hit and all the, all the testing kind of went out the window. So we decided to set it aside this year. It wasn't a goal. It was on the parking list goal. We said we'd get to it when we can. We still haven't gotten to three of our major goals, so I don't think it's a board goal this year. It's certainly something that I think the board needs to talk about. And I don't feel like we should be putting these policy questions in the, in the job description, so I can't support this. Thank you.
Any other comments? So Gordon, do you want to, oh, Laurel? Laurel, I don't know. Yeah.
If it's a board goal, was a board goal, it must have been talked about. Was it, nothing happened with it?
Right. I think we, it was a board goal, not this year, but the year before, I believe.
It's also in our. Okay, I think it's also in our 2020 vision plan, but I, I don't remember anybody. I think there was a question in my memory, maybe I'm wrong. I don't remember anybody saying, I don't like this goal. What people said is parking lot, it's not the, you know, we have the superintendent search, we have COVID. And there were other things that made it there. And I don't, I guess if, if somebody is willing to say, I would be interested to hear if, if on the substance, somebody feels like you would not want, um, to look for somebody who had been leading in this direction.
Thank you. So Gordon, your hand has been up. Do you, I, you've been in line. Is that because you did the amendment? Can we get the other people to speak that haven't?
Yes, I have, I just have my next two things, but I'll shut up about this.
Um, I'm trying, Maya, Mary, Martina hasn't spoken yet, so I'm going to go to Martina, then go.
Um, how about something like, um, you know, just in hearing the, uh, questions that people had? How about something like shares the value of reducing, um, time spent on standardized testing? So friendly, friendly amendment to Gordon's amendment. Cool. So should we vote now on that? Yeah. Or no, Mary still has her, I'm sorry.
Comment before we vote.
Me?
Yeah, your hands up. Oh, you didn't.
No, no, my hand is up. I was just waiting. I didn't hear what Martina said. That's what I was like. No, just a, a point of history, because I, I do remember these facts sometimes. March 11th, 2020, two years ago, almost, uh, was when we had a special meeting. Uh, and Gordon, you had submitted like, like 15 questions. I remember it was in the McNutt room, McNutt room. It was in the par room, McNutt room, where'd that come from? The par room, and that's when we also got our first update on COVID. And it was like, oh my God, this is serious. So that's when the world changed. And we, we got so far into Judy's point, yes, it's, it's a state function and a federal function. And we got as far as we could and we said, we, we can't do the same more. We need to deal with COVID. So that's why it got dropped and that's why it got brought up again in August as a parking lot. But it is not the goal this year and that's why, because there's still work to be done on it. And so I think the board needs to have the conversation. And like I said, that's just a bit of history and I'm done.
So Maya, did you have another comment for this was?
Yeah, I just, I, I think it might not be a board goal, but it feels certainly to be a shared board value. And, um, in terms of, uh, whether it's state driven or locally administered, I think that, um, the locally administered component of it, we can ask our future leader what they think of it. And in terms of the state stuff, we just saw our state take a big step towards really evaluating the, the relevance and the time and the resources put in towards this, um, this practice. And I think it's important to note that while it is, um, told to us that we would have ramifications if we didn't, you know, uh, follow state mandates. There's still, to this day, has been no school district that has ever been defunded because they resisted standardized testing. So I think this goes back to the whole board, I mean, the, the bold leadership component of this language. And I think it's really important, two things. We, we have, in the middle of the pandemic, we all realized that we learned a lot of lessons and we wanted to come out of the pandemic, carrying those lessons forward. Hopefully we get to that point, but also this is a question of equity. We have equity embedded throughout this job description and standardized testing has, has been, um, has been a, a, um, tool of, of reproducing inequitable practices in school districts for decades now. And I, I think this is a really crucial component of our equity vision. So I, I really, I, I appreciate Martina's compromising language that, that softens Gordon's language a little bit, but still holds true to the spirit of the, of the value that I know I joined the board holding.
Thank you. Uh, Alicia?
Thanks, Maya. And I think we all agree to that. I think the question isn't whether we believe standardized testing and all of that information you just gave us. It's as a board, we haven't had the conversation, so we don't want to be adding those things. But I agree with Martina's compromise. I would actually love to hear it again. And I think one of the things that we can put on, put in there perhaps instead of as a board, we could just put as board members. I just want to be transparent. I want to be ethical that we as a board haven't decided on this. And so we have to be really thoughtful about that. We, we are a policymaking board and, and while we all believe, I believe, I truly believe that from listening to everybody, uh, I just want the language clean. So if Martina, you want to repeat it? Did we get a second on that? Cause I would be happy to second it.
It was a friendly amendment and Gordon said it was okay, right?
And did the second person say it was, so couldn't we hear it again and?
Laurel, you were the second. Are you okay with the friendly amendment?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think it would be something like, um, shares the value of reducing time spent on standardized testing. So I'm not even saying that it is a value or a goal of the board. I'm just saying that that is a value that some people in the world have and that this person shares it.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Um, I have that written down. So, um, all those in favor of that amendment, raise your hand. That passes seven votes yes. So it passes unanimously. Does anyone, I'm going to go to Gordon's next one. Okay.
Thanks. My next one is, um, we talked about this a little on the, and the what you'll bring where it says, experience in the role of superintendent preferred. Um, I, I just want to, don't make it sound so exclusive. So I, I would like to say experience in the role of superintendent is preferred, but we also welcome candidates for whom this would be their first superintendent position. So something like that that makes it clear, we're not trying to close the door to other people in case somebody would read it that way. But that doesn't undo the preference, since I know some people on the board feel strongly about that.
Would you be okay with preferred but not required? Or do you want a little more welcome mat dish?
I'm kind of a welcoming guy.
Yeah, Gordon, I think that about you all the time. So, yeah, okay.
I, I'd, I would prefer the welcoming thing, but if you have it, but if there's some other idea to make it closer to what you would feel comfortable with, I'm, I'm open.
Well, I'm just used to preferred but not required. But if you want to say preferred, but all people, but everyone is encouraged or something like that. I don't know, maybe all Mazz, the professionals have some insight.
Um, yeah, I'd say not, not required definitely covers it. Um, but, but I think whatever you, whatever the group wants to do, we'll get across the idea.
But so in, in your experience, you think if we just say experience preferred but not required, people who don't have that will still like, won't be discouraged from playing. Okay, so then that's fine with me.
So you're going to accept the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Remember who seconded your?
I think Alicia just went in and amended it right away without a second.
Okay.
It's late, man. There's no, I know. Somebody yell at me about that. Okay, order.
Gordon, please restate your, it's, um, it's preferred superintendent, go ahead.
Experience in the role of superintendent preferred but not required.
Do we have a second? Alicia's seconding, Gordon, Gordon moved, Alicia's seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, let's call the vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, we have seven members voting yes. Okay. Passes unanimously. Okay, Gordon, two for two.
Okay, so the, the last thing is in that same what you'll bring thing on the first one, I would like to take out the data-driven decision-making because I think that reads to people as like a, a primary focus on test scores because that's most of the data we have. And we have elsewhere in the description that we want somebody to be able to look at data in order to, to use that to help make decisions. And so then it would just read with a keen focus on equity access and inclusion for all students.
Uh, so Gordon's moving to strike data-driven decision and Alicia, you're seconding. Okay, uh, any discussion? Um, I assume, um. Oh no, Maya's hand is up. Anyone want to speak to that? I guess I'd like to know where else in the, um, job description you saw this or in that position. Yeah.
In the ability to manage complex organizations and systems. It says, we want somebody who can analyze complex nuanced data and information from multiple angles and exercise judgment and making critical decisions and communicate the implications to diverse audiences.
Great. Okay, I like that. Um, Maya, is your hand up to speak?
Yeah, I, I really like this suggestion, Gordon. Um, I think that we are on the cusp of moving towards data being used to, to drive equity access and inclusion. But historically, data has often been used in the other, in the other, um, it has, has, has not, has not succeeded in, in aligning itself with equity access and inclusion. And, um, I, I would, I would definitely favor taking that part out and, and just keeping that statement about those three things, equity access and inclusion as a standalone statement.
Anyone else want to speak to that? Okay, will you just, I think we're ready to vote then. Gordon, will you read it one more time?
Sure, it'll, the first thing, bullet, bullet under what you'll bring would read, a clear track record of improving academic outcomes for students with a keen focus on equity access and inclusion for all students.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand. Okay, we have this amendment passing seven to zero. Great, you're also three for three now. Okay, so anyone else want to speak to the, uh, profile?
I was going to speak, but I'm afraid I'd lose. And no, I'm just kidding, Judy. Let's get Judy home for her birthday.
I am, I am home. Okay, so then I think, um, we have the, we are now back to the amendment, we are back to the original motion. And we have six amendments that have all been voted in unanimously. And I don't know, are we okay with not going back and reading all of those? If we have those, okay. So any discussion? Then, oh, Maya?
I just want to give props to, I think it was Sylvia who consolidated all of those edits. And that, that's just huge. And before we vote, we should take a moment to just, woo-hoo, that was awesome. Thank you, Sylvia.
Okay, so then I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of the, uh, profile as it was amended tonight, raise your hand. All right, we have a profile that passed seven, seven yes votes, seven to zero. So yay, yay! And Monica, thank you for hanging in there and a couple of, couple of people on this caller in different time zones. So I think then that was our big order of business. On the 16th, we'll be approving the process, having more discussion and approving the process. And we have a work session before the 16th on our climate, uh, climate change goal. So with that, I'm going to, oh, Laurel, you have your hand up.
Could you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Did you say before the 16th, not on the 16th?
On the 16th. No, I said on the 16th.
Okay.
Yeah. No, no, nothing before that.
Thank God.
Thanks for clarifying. All right. Okay, then with seeing no other hands, I am going to adjourn this meeting of the four J school board. Thank you, everyone.